It is now 5:01. And I call to order the regular meeting, I'm sorry, I called to order, I get confused here. Mayor calls a meeting to order along, I called to order the meeting along with special closed session meeting, the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Weather District and the city's housing assets successor. This is, may we have roll call please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. This is a time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda per Government Code Section 54954.3. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I don't see anyone in the audience at this time that would like to address the council. Therefore, may we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. There are 11 items on the regular agenda and two items on a special agenda for a closed session this evening. Item A is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2 and the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. Items B and C on behalf of the city are related to items H, I, J and K on behalf of the Airport Authority. That is all pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. That litigation is the litigation between COMAV, the Airport Authority and the City of Victorville and the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item D is pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1 and that is Dan Meyer versus the City of Victorville. The case number is set forth on the agenda. Item E is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code 54957B and the position laid there to a city manager. Item F is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2 and again, the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. Item G is pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1, the case name and case number set forth on the agenda. And with respect to the special meeting notice, there are two existing litigation matters, one on behalf of the City Council, one on behalf of the Airport Authority, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1, SEC versus the City of Victorville and the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock meeting.
Thank you. Now we will recess to our closed session and regular meeting convenes at 6:00 PM. Starting just a little bit late, we were in closed session and we're trying to get everyone over here. So just be patient, we'll be right with you. It is now 6:03. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Rail Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Weather District and the city's housing assets successor. May we have roll call please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. May we have our closed session announcements by our city attorney please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. There were actually 13 closed session items this evening. I'll run through them quickly. Items A, item A was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2 and the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. Items B and C on behalf of the City Council along with items H, I, J and K are all related. They are all existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 959, sorry, 54956.9D1 and the parties to that litigation are set forth on the agenda as are the case numbers. Item E is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code 54957B, position title is city manager. Items, item D is, sorry, I took those out of order. Item D is pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1 and the case name and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Items F and, sorry, item F is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2 and again, facts and circumstances are set forth on the agenda. And lastly, item G is pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1 and the case names and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. We also had two items on a special notice meeting and that was existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1 and again, the case names and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. There is a reportable action with respect to one item and that is item, item D, the pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1 between Dan Meyer and the City of Victorville. The council unanimously agreed to settle that lawsuit for the, by payment from Mr. Dan Meyer to the city for the amount of $7,800 and in return the city will dismiss, sorry, he will dismiss his complaint and the city will remove its notice of pendency of action. We have copies of that agreement should anybody like it. That was a unanimous decision.
Thank you.
That is the underreportable action.
Thank you. The invocation will be delivered by Michael Powers from High Desert Church and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief John Schuler, so please stand.
Mayor Garcia, apparently the pastor has, is not present tonight. Oh, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. Okay.
Okay. All right, feel all about your heads and join me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, Lord. We thank you for the ability to meet, Lord, and I just pray for this meeting. I pray for the hearts of the people in this room, Lord. Give us wisdom for the decisions that will be made and especially for tonight, for the young ones that are in attendance as well to just be here and be present, God, and we just thank you for this opportunity that we can come before you and just converse one another, Lord. So give us wisdom and give us discernment. In Jesus' name, amen.
This evening we do have a presentation, a presentation of Public Works essay contest winners and I'll come down and join the person from Public Works. I don't have his name or her name.
Good evening, everyone. I am very happy to be here again, once more. I think this is my fourth, maybe my fifth presentation for Public Works essay contest. This evening we are going to honor some very talented students from Victor Elementary School District who participated in our Public Works essay contest. To help me recognize the winners, I'd like to invite Louis Rodriguez from our Public Works Department and is that Jonet? Jeanette Ellis from the school district to come forward and join me. I know we all look forward to learning who the winners are. Louis, I turn the microphone over to you and Jeanette.
Thank you very much. Since 1960, the American Public Works Association has sponsored National Public Works Week to educate the general public about the values and necessities of public works projects. This year, 2017, National Public Works theme was Public Works connects us. This year, Victorville Public Works then celebrated that vital role of public works, what it plays in connecting us all together. Since 2000, the City of Victorville Public Works Department, excuse me, has been hosting Public Works Days by opening our doors and inviting the community to showcase our duties, services, responsibilities and required equipment as needed. In 2010, we started collaborating with the Victor Elementary School District and we invited fourth grade, one classroom, fourth graders from each of the district schools to participate in a variety of public works functions. On May 18, 2017, we were very pleased and honored to be able to host to over 300 children in our annual Public Works Day event. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeanette for a few words.
First of all, my name is Jeanette Ellis and Victor Elementary School District would like to thank the City of Victorville and all of the Public Works employees for all of the work that they put in to make that a successful event for our students. Our students learn all about the careers that all of our city employees do to keep our cities safe, clean and in working order. So we want to thank you guys for that. Give them a big round of applause, please. And every year I go in and I train our Public Works employees on the 21st century skills and we do a bunch of like engineering type of activities so that they can learn what it's like to have to use all of those 21st century skills of collaborating, teamwork, communicating, sharing and listening to others' ideas. So we want to thank them for that. So let's go ahead and introduce our essay winners and parents who brought the parent, the student winners. Thank you for bringing your child to receive their award.
The third place winner in the essay contest for Public Works Day was written on graffiti titled Graffiti Workers Amazing Career. It's a $25 gift card from Barnes and Noble and the winner's from Liberty Elementary School. The winner's name is Jaden Young. Second place winner wrote an essay on animal care and control, a very good essay, actually, very good essay. This winner receives a $50 gift card from Barnes and Noble. The winner's from Village Elementary School and the name is Ulyssy, Ulyssa Perez. Did I say that right? I'm sorry. And now for the first place winner. The essay written on this one was concrete. Wrote a very impressive essay. We, all of us that read it, we were very impressed in the way it was written, did an excellent job. Wrote an impressive essay in which the student wrote, "I say many, I saw many workers that day, but I was most amazed by the concrete station and how much they make our city a better place." We received a $100 gift card from Barnes and Nobles from Delray Elementary, Filberto Escobido. Before I conclude, I would like to thank our council for allowing us to continue our Public Works Day event. Thank you very much. We really appreciate that. I'd also like to thank the Victor Elementary School District for their continued participation promoting career education. We would also like to give recognition to the following sponsors for their support. Craftco Company, Rancho Motors, Victor Concrete, Victor Valley Transit Authority, West Coast Arboris, Victorville Glass, Grayson King, Green D. Bordnawski and Robertson's Concrete. For without them, we wouldn't be able to host these events. But before I conclude, I also like to give a special thanks to the Public Works team that really put this, this event together. Sheena Romo, you was, you was there, you did the most work. Chris Becerra, she also did a phenomenal job. Barbara Soper, Myra Alvarez. I want to say that you guys did a phenomenal job. Thank you very much. I think this year's was one of the best Public Works Days yet. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. That is wonderful. At this time, I will have our city clerk present the agenda to the council and any revisions to the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the written communications or public comments sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Penal Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council and there are no revisions to tonight's agenda, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. We, this evening we do not have any appeal hearings. Therefore, we will be moving on to public hearings. And I have item B1, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against granting a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Desert High Transportation Corp. for non-emergency medical transportation business. Madam Clerk, you can read the recommendation, please?
The recommendation would be at the close of the public hearing, the City Council adopt resolution number 17-033 approving the certificate of public convenience and necessity.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. I don't have any cards on this particular item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak? I don't see anyone, so I close the public hearing. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? None?
Second?
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item B2. EB16-00011, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against a proposed amendment to the Victorville Municipal Code revising standards associated with city wide wireless communication facilities. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council conduct the public hearing, find the municipal code amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQUA Section 15061B3, introduce ordinance number 2368 for adoption and first reading by title only, and waive further reading in full of proposed ordinance number 2368.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing and I do have one card. I think it's Tim Harris.
Good evening. My impression from what I've seen and read is that this is to allow other wireless communicate, or wireless communication companies to be able to place wireless instruments on telephone, or not telephone poles, but light standards, basically. All I would say is that we currently have at least three wireless communications companies here in town, of which Desert Wireless or DWISP is one. If you add more and more, If you add more and more wireless infrastructure throughout the city, you start to degrade the whole overall system. Because we are right now overdone in our RF allotments. Our radio frequency and the channels that we have available are packed. We have, you know, as I say, three companies in town. And those companies have just about consumed everything that there is. And we pretty much have to struggle with each other. So my opinion, or as a business owner here in town, I'm sorry, general manager here in town, we would, you know, prefer that nothing else be added to the communications overlog that we have now. If it is passed or goes through, we should put in place some sort of, I guess I would say, agreement or something that each communication company has to get together so that nobody is really wiping out the other companies. Because it's easy to do. It's easy to degrade services throughout town just by putting out another access point here or another access point here. And if it interferes with one that is already existing, it will seriously degrade the services that are allowed. That's it. Thank you.
Can you explain, when you say degrade, this is new to me. I know nothing.
Right. What happens generally is if you have something at, say, 5.251 and another company is on that same channel, it will lower the overall quality of people's connection to that. So whether it be their company, or I'm sorry, their customers or my customers, let's say, we will start to have a lower level of service just because of the fact that you can't communicate, too many people cannot communicate on the same channel.
You're talking about telephone or internet?
We're talking about wireless internet primarily. But now wireless internet has become a conveyance, or yeah, conveyance for VoIP, voice over internet telephones, for television. People use a lot of, as they say, cut the cord. People use internet to watch television and movies, Netflix, things like that. And it'll dramatically affect a lot of things as far as the customers go. We have, you know, roughly probably a thousand customers in the immediate area. And, you know, as things change, and we do have things change, so we try to adjust within that. But the more you put in, the more congested it gets.
How is that different from what I happen to have, which is FiOS?
FiOS is a cable-based.
Not wireless.
Not wireless. It's wireless within your house if you have wireless in your house. And oftentimes, we see a lot of problems with that. I mean, if you look at your registry and your wireless device at your house, you'll be able to see your neighbors and your neighbors beyond that and the neighbors beyond that. You know, so hopefully you're on different channels. But, you know, most people tend to leave it on the initial channel that they put it on or that it comes from the factory. FiOS Charter, or not Charter anymore, whatever it is, that's it, is.
Frontier.
It is a cable-based system so that there is no interference from that. And that's how that basically works. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for all that information. We appreciate it. I don't have any other cards.
Question for staff. Have we, is this something that's?
Yeah, I'd be happy to respond. I don't know if you want to close the public hearing first or?
Yeah, I don't have any other cards or any other testimony from the public. So I will close the public hearing. And I will request council members' comments or questions or?
I have, I have.
Want to get to the other one first or you want to?
Let me have the city manager, please.
Mr. Harris brings up a good point, something we agree with to a certain degree. However, due to recent findings by the California Public Utilities Commission, which grants wireless access communications providers the same right-of-way to the city's right-of-way. Right now, wireless companies are arguing and successfully arguing that they could go in and put up a pole, just like a cable company could go in and lay cable within our right-of-way because of these findings. It's actually being strengthened by a Senate bill that just passed, I believe. And so what this does, it's not the city saying, "We want more of these," or "We want to allow more of these." It would be the city recognizing that the PUC requires us to allow these. What this does is it puts some parameters as to where they can go. The biggest concern, I believe, at the Planning Commission meeting, and Director of Development is here to get into more details should the council wish, was that we don't have new telecommunications poles going up within our right-of-way. And so instead, this ordinance would require them to go on existing poles, not building new poles. And it would also limit the size of the devices that would go on top of those poles. So that's the intent, as far as I understand it. Certainly, Mr. Borcher could give more detail if the council so chooses.
They have to be permitted, each of those?
Yes, they would have to be permitted.
Just go around and stick them on poles.
Right, 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 exactly. So we may have to revisit this because of the Senate bill that I believe recently passed. But this gets us out in front of what was a looming onslaught, I'll say, of new wireless poles going up literally in the city's right-of-way.
Thank you.
Amen, no?
Yes, go ahead.
So I would first like to start off by thanking the Planning Department and other staff that were involved in creating the legend and the telling of the pages for ease of following the thought processes with these documents. I'm very concerned for the passage of Senate Bill 649. I understand how the city of Victorville must begin to accommodate the wireless industry, but also in my opinion, there is due diligence to the community to keep it under safe, under safe regards if there exists levels of microwaves. Also, since the city of Victorville is updating its code, what is the city of Victorville doing to keep at a fair distance the unnecessary layer of ultra-high-frequency antennas to locate them away as far as can be from schools, parks, and other high concentrations of our community? If at all possible, I would like council to consider discussion in the next agenda or if it's not needed, probably to propose, looking at how the city of Victorville can start to look at private land users to have the safety net so that these land users aren't allowed to use their premises that would accommodate high concentrations of microwaves when it comes to parks, churches, schools, and other high concentrations of population density. I know we discussed this earlier on.
So this code change doesn't address any belief or fear or concern about microwave energies, any potential health detriment? I can say that many of the cell towers in the city now are in our parks. They actually lease a portion of. I don't know that it's the city council's purview to try to make a medical determination as to the danger. But certainly, if it's council's desire, we can look into studies or whomever may have studied such things.
A lot of this also is regulated by both myriad of federal regulations and state regulations. So the city is somewhat limited in what it can and cannot do, but we could look at those types of issues.
Right, and in my discussions earlier on with city manager, there was things that the city could do to ease or put off some of these things that would be.
I think your Planning Commission and planning staff are pretty much lockstep. I mean, we'd like to regulate these as much as we can in the context of the existing federal and state laws, so.
I move approval of Item B2.
Let me read the title of the ordinance first. Ordinance Number 2368, In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville relating to amendments to Title 16 of the Victorville Municipal Code that include clarified and revised standards for wireless communication facilities located within public right-of-way and on private property within environmental exemption. There's a motion by Mr. Kennedy.
Second?
Second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to consent counter. Consent counter, Items C1 through C11 may be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to pull a couple of items. I'd like to pull C1 through C5 and C10 for comment, and C7 and 8. So I'd like to move for 6.
What is it that you're pulling?
So I want to pull C1 through C5. I have questions on those. And C10 as well. And I'm just going to comment on C7 and C8.
You're confusing me.
So I move to go on C6 to C8.
C1 through C5 and then?
Okay.
Two.
C1 through C5 and C10 is what I'm trying to pull. I have comments on two others. So we can adopt with one motion, C6 to C8.
I don't recall you mentioning 9. Is that, you wanted to pull 9 or not?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Do you have questions on all of them?
C1 through C5 and C10 is my questions.
Move approvals, C7, 8, 9, and 11?
And 6, is 6 included?
6 through 9.
6, 7, 8, 9, and 11.
Move approval, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
On C1, Christian, I'm looking at the children's program. There was a slight drop. Is that patterned in the past year as a norm?
Mr. Gunter, I guess she was referring to you, but just wondering if there's a pattern as to the number of drops in children's programs as based on the report shows. Year-to-date had 70 last year and 57 this year.
And so while you're walking on your way out, I have another question. I'm also looking at the circulation of adults, young adults and the juveniles. And I see it in some mountain drop occurring from last year to this year. And I'm thinking that this is approximately maybe 30 checkouts per contact at the library. And what are the questions that are being asked to find out how to consider literacy to be progressive in our community?
Well, we have several questions here that you've asked me. Let's talk about programming first. We have had some changing in programming relative to staffing. We do lose staff from time to time. And I believe the drop in the children's programming that you were asking about was relative to us having less staff. So I think that answers your question.
What was it?
We have, we lost a teacher, basically.
Oh, okay.
So that's the reason for that drop. Second question relative to adult programming. The library is very committed to helping adults with reading issues. I believe we've got a number of different programs that we offer. Those are available in the rec pages. I believe most of the library programming is in there. If you'd like some specifics, I'd be glad to provide them.
Well, because for the adults, the young adults and the juveniles, I see that we have for the year anywhere from 3,000 to 4,000. I think that was a lot. In a month, that would be about 300 to 400. So that's a very significant number. And so I was wondering, what are we doing, what happened in those sections?
It's actually the circulation, not the adult programs, just to be clear. Circulation is people checking books out.
Right, and we actually have 800 people a day who come through our little library on an average. Of those, about 35 are actually there taking some kind of class every single day. That's our average.
Classes were over or something?
Excuse me?
Maybe classes switched or there was an end of the class.
There can be a number of things, changes in programming, all sorts of things that can happen that affect that.
Okay, and I have for C2. I also have a question for the facilities report.
Okay.
I'm looking at the report, I'm looking at the repairs and the service requests. And I was wondering for what citywide and which projects, because it's not specified here. It just gives me numbers. So I was interested in knowing what specific repairs to which buildings and which facilities is the city of Victorville taking care of.
I don't have that information with me. We do keep a facility service request record. That record is something we've kept for as long as I've been here, actually shortly before, I believe. We have requests from all over the city, all the different buildings, where it may be anything from a leaky roof to fixing a leaking faucet that we attend to. And so that's typically what those numbers represent.
Would it be possible maybe to put something small of that nature? Like leaky faucets or something vague, but not just citywide and projects? I think it would fit in here.
We could try, certainly.
Oh, thank you. And that was my last question for you. Thank you so much.
Very good.
And then for C5, I have questions. What are the roads conditions of Victorville specifically on Village Drive and La Puesta Drive in Victorville? And when was the last time the Public Works reported any maintenance on those streets? Has there been any studies on the streets for signage or any precautionary road markings?
Councilmember Gomez, just a word of caution, as a claim, I would recommend that if we're going to get into that discussion, that we take that to a closed session discussion at some point in the future. Just because it's, as a claim, it is by its nature a potential litigation.
Okay, so then for future reference, anything that's a claim is asked during closed session? Is that what we're saying?
No, if you have general questions. The problem is if it's a claim.
This was very specific?
Yeah, but we would not recommend commenting on claims being filed against the city because in all likelihood, claims will turn into litigation and you are providing information that potentially could be harmful to the city.
Okay, so for clarification's sake, anything that's a claim I should ask during closed session, right?
No, again, my recommendation is you don't comment on claims. You could ask them in closed session if you want to, or you could ask individually staff members in a private discussion with the city manager. Or the city attorney or the risk manager.
Go in closed session, right? That's what you're recommending? I'm just having clarity. It's either a yes or a no.
I would recommend that you ask those questions of either me, the city attorney, this claims manager, risk manager, or the city manager. And if they can't answer the questions, then at that point, certainly you could ask for it to be discussed in closed session.
Okay, so right now, asking is not appropriate.
I would recommend against it because, again, it's a claim and it could influence the potential of litigation in the future.
Right, and for C7, I have a comment. So C7, I just say, "Please continue to work to see how council can have access to payroll being reported by departments so that its transparency to council is evident." That was a comment that I had. For C8, I also have a comment. The demand schedule will be reported out by departments by next agenda. So I'd like to thank staff for allowing this to come into fruition. My last question is for Item C10. This is probably for Brian if no one up here can respond. When was the last time that the city had issues with sewer and sewer flows in the city of Victorville? So in other words, when was the last time that city encountered the capacity problems with sewer flows being diverted and how did we address them in the past?
I could take a stab at that. The sewer system is something that we manage regularly and recurrently. And we're always monitoring flows and the volume of flow through the pipes. This particular one is a case where we were able to identify a volume of flows that were of concern to us from a management standpoint to where we were concerned that there was a potential for sanitary system overflow. So that's what triggered the need for this diversion. And effectively, the diversion is basically just rerouting in a new sewer lateral, new sewer piping to a larger main line so that we can be more preventative in avoiding a sanitary system overflow. We are in the middle of an inspection of all of our sewer systems right now. inspection of all of our sewer systems right now. In fact, maybe as a month or two ago now, we awarded about $4 million in contract to have the entire system camouflaged to look at the various conditions within the sewer system. So we're always attempting to try to identify where problems occur. And when we do find problems, we're then using the CIP process, the Capital Improvement Program, to actually do further maintenance to upgrade the system.
Thank you. That was all.
More questions?
No, no more.
Move of C1 through C5. I lost track of these.
C10.
7?
C10.
And C10.
Might be good just to say the balance of the items and that way...
Okay.
It was C1 through C5 and C10.
How about the entire?
That's total cover.
There a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we will move on to written communications. We have item D1. Initiating proceedings to fix, levy, collect, stand by charges for water improvement, district numbers 1 and 2. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors adopt resolution numbers VWD 17-001 and VWD 17-002.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D2. Sign location lease agreement buy-in between the city of Victorville and the Auto Park at Valley Center Association. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council approve the signed location lease agreement buy-in between the city of Victorville and the Auto Park at Valley Center Association for property more particularly described as APN number 3106-262-09 and 3106-261-34, Auto Park Sign Properties.
Questions, staff?
Okay.
I'm assuming all the, through discussions, all the problems have been worked out or concerns and everybody's in agreement at this point?
That's correct. Everything we discussed in closed session, we've put into the agreement and it is now ready to move forward.
Have a motion?
I have a question. I don't know if it's before or after the motion. So, is Victor releasing the property and the sign space? Was it the literal signage and then there's a small portion? That was unclear for me. A small piece of land, was it?
Yeah, the basic construct of this agreement is to lease the underlying property which has the structures on it. So it's effectively a ground lease and it passes through the responsibility for the auto park to actually undertake the operations, maintenance, and upgrade.
And then after the five-year lease, have we anticipated what we're going to do with the contract? If we're going to extend it at the same value or have we decided that?
Not at this point, no. I think if it's working well, we'd probably make a similar recommendation that it extend.
And is the annual cost that's being leased for $8,000 annually going to go back to help maintain some of the costs such as those that were expressed in Exhibit C?
I believe those become general fund revenues.
Yeah, it's, yeah, general fund revenues, so those would be part of the city's general operating revenues. The lease actually would transfer the responsibility for maintenance of the sign to the auto park itself.
So we don't have any costs for AP with any maintenance, right?
Correct.
Okay.
No, in fact, looking at Exhibit C now, it looks like these are just clarifying what's the expected obligation of the auto park to undertake in terms of repair and maintenance.
No further questions?
Move approval?
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D3. Request to approve an award of consultant contract for debt collection services. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council approve the award of a consultant contract to professional credit services for debt collection services.
I have a question. Looking, looking at the RFPs, brought to mind the importance of having a clause in our contracts to go out to have a secure of 20% of jobs going to benefit the city of Victorville and possibly a 10% to benefit the county of San Bernardino respectively. Are these awards going out without those types of stipulations? And the reason I ask that is because a lot on our minds, we have this thing called creating jobs. And this is a possible way of creating such a job so we get either contracting out and then gets subcontractors to get people from Victorville or from the county so that we have a allotted amount of people that are being employed in our city.
I don't believe that was one of the criteria that was part of the RFPs, but I would ask our purchasing manager, finance manager, John Maniola, to come up to to talk about that, that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. No, that's not part of our solicitation requirements in the RFP, but what was is we did send it out to all the local collection companies. We currently have a local collection company now. And it was a takeover from when we took over the mergers of the Water District. We carried over their collection company. They are local. And we went back out because they expressed to us that it was starting to become too overwhelming of a task for them to continue our work. So, we did go out. We solicited in the Daily Press, in the San Bernardino Sun. We put it on our website. And then we got those nine responses back. We topped out the top four, went through qualifications, extensive interviewing, and then we ranked them, 1 through 4.
Yeah, I did read that. And I saw there was a lot of California, but there was also Washington and then other states.
Right.
Thank you for that. Lastly, I would, I would like for us to consider, or at least staff to include a percentage of jobs that contract the awardee to the city of Victorville within the Victor Valley area. And I would like to see a target of 20% as a starting point. What do we need to consider this to be a part of our guidelines? This is just a suggestion.
So that would be a modification to the purchasing code. If the council would like us to put something together like that, we certainly could.
So then I'll just bring this item towards the agenda and see if we vote on it unanimously. Thank you.
Question, Madam Chair. The, there was a comment in the staff report. We need these services to collect unpaid water and trash bills. Were the city is unable to lean the properties? Why wouldn't the city be able to lean the properties?
The city does use liens on the properties. At some point in our attempts at recovery, we do end up needing professional credit services for recovery. These are not, this is not a first-line use. This is once, not only the lien process, but any other of our internal credit recovery services or credit recovery attempts have failed.
Well, it's just more efficient and effective then to do it this way.
When we go out for credit services like this, this is when other internal operations, internal tools have failed.
Since you're going to, or you might be looking into this, what you're going to pay for collections, might be interesting to know also what it would cost the city if they go to a direct lien after a notice of inheriting. I don't know if that's a... I'm just confused.
Talking about $200 water bills?
Well, that's what I don't want to s... Yeah, we give, turn it over to somebody. What confuses me is I lean properties. I do quite frequently. Anybody can lean properties. And I wondered why the city couldn't. But I, I don't think it's that. I think it's a matter of somebody has to determine what does it cost to collect and what is the percentage paid? It's a lot more efficient sometimes simply to let somebody else collect it. And I'm thinking that's what we're doing here.
Essentially, yes. This is, we do have internal collections that we go through with city staff that are effective. This is for ones that essentially, for whatever reason, the city has given up on. We've been unsuccessful. Or, for whatever reason, I don't have that reason, but we were unable to lean the property.
All right. I was just curious. Thank you.
Move approval of that item D3?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D4. Amending the schedule of engineering fees and charges for services. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council adopt resolution number 17-034 amending the schedule of engineering fees and charges for services to include certain fee and deposit amounts associated with the adoption of ordinance number 2365 to become effective on June 15, 2017.
Just a comment if I might. Madam Mayor, we've discussed this before and it's here to finalize it. Some time back, I brought to someone's attention that we have a lot of streets that don't have the cap placed on them. Either the subdivision is a third build or a half build or a quarter build. And now those streets that haven't been finalized, or haven't been, they don't have that last one and a half inch asphalt cap. It's deteriorating and we need to go in and provide either maintenance or pave the street when in fact, it is responsibility of the subdivider. And I wish that someone would survey or look at the records. Because if we continue to wait and not finish the streets, the existing streets that have been, which are temporary, are going to be degraded to the point, we're going to have to rebuild the street. It's not going to be anybody's responsibility except the city because the subdivider have met the responsibility. With the exception of that last one or one and a half inch cap. We have a lot of those. And the streets are really deteriorating whether that exists. And I would be more happy to give engineering department the addresses. I'm sure they already know where they're at. But I think it's an error to let them continue to go. Same thing here. If they put up a, if they put up, rather than have the insurance, if they put up the money, there's got to be a time period where some action takes place. Even though we may have the money to finish it out, it's not going to cover the cost. There has to be a continual review and a report, I would think, to ensure that we don't end up spending taxpayers' money on an unfinished product. I think that would, that would be unfair, so.
I have a comment too, a question. I'm seeking clarification on the process that this is being done to add a schedule fee. I would like to know why the municipal code in this manner cannot reflect the schedule of fees as it has for so long? And what the purpose of adding a resolution to certain fee and deposit amounts would require instead an ordinance? In other words, I'm curious as to what is the purpose of changing the current codified law of the municipal code in Victorville's charter?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might. So, last month, May 16th, we actually made some code changes allowing for the use of liens to secure tentative tracts or subdivisions as opposed to requiring the provision of bonds or even cash deposits to secure the public improvements associated therewith. As a part of that action, one of the things that the code change did is it actually removed the two or three, I believe it's two of the three fees that are identified in the staff report, removed them from ordinance and in fact, as a part of that item that we approved, identified that we would separately come back and approve those fees, those same fees, no change in the fee, no increase, those same identical fees via a resolution. And more for the sake of ease and to keep all the fees in common place, adopt them via a resolution as a part of the regular schedule of fees. So that's effectively what this item is doing. Absent approving this resolution and including them in your current fee schedule, my understanding is that these fees effectively won't exist and therefore not allowing us to perfect what was intended on May 6 when we adopted ordinance number 2365.
Move approval of D4?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to public comments. And I do have some cards. The first one is Sharon Foster.
Good evening, and thank you for your time tonight. I'm Sharon Foster. I wear several hats here in the valley. But today, I want to talk to you about the California Historic Route 66 Association. We are lucky enough in Victorville to have about 15 miles of this wonderful road. And I'm a steward of that road. One of the things that, in bringing up the road itself, I was, it was brought to my attention recently that the museum that we have on D Street has about 25,000 visitors a year. Now that's a wonderful starting place for something so small, but yet very depicting of our Route 66. What I came to you today was, in the past, I've talked to you about Victorville being a biological potty stop. That was when I was working at the museum. That was the first thing out of their mouth is, did we have a bathroom? I would like to make Victorville a destination rather than a potty stop. And it has been known and with our studies that we've done on economic studies, our visitors spend between $100 and $200 a day on the road. This is an untapped revenue for the Victorville business people. And I'd like to have the council help us in deciding how we can possibly spread this revenue around in the Victorville area. Our sisters, the root organization, the museum here locally, and the information center that I have on 7th Street are very helpful in bringing our visitors in, giving them information and sending them on their way. So if you could help me with possibly spreading these dollars around and again, making better dollars. So I'd like to talk to your economic development people. And if they have any questions, we do have studies to back this up. And I want to thank you for your time tonight and please think of us. We're here to help increase the revenue and possibly help the image of Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sharon. The next person is Deion Delian? Or Deen Delian?
My name is Deen Delian. And I'm going to be talking to Blanca again. One day when I was talking to her, she said she had no idea what a sanctuary city was. She has no definition for a sanctuary city. And I know the council has voted against having a sanctuary city. But I ran across this. Maybe this will help her. I will not tell her where I got it. She does her own homework. I don't do it for her. Didn't do it for my own kids. I don't do it for, didn't do it for the classrooms either. What do I have? 3 minutes, 2 minutes? 3 minutes? Okay, Blanca does not know the definition of a sanctuary city, yet she defends them. She spoke at UCR. I hope you guys got that stuff in the mail today. Several weeks ago, I was there to listen to her speaking. Many speakers were in support of the undocumented immigrants. You must learn to do your own research and find out what this means. You must learn to do your own research and find out what this means, what the sanctuary city means. All you gotta do is take one word and look it up on the computer. It's that simple. Sanctuary cities are so described because their officials are pledged to defy immigration law and offer a safe haven to people who have entered the United States illegally, including serial felons who have already wreaked havoc on hundreds of thousands of innocent Americans. We call those angel moms and angel dads. Sanctuary cities were created by the leftists immediately following the terrorist attacks on nine eleven as an explicit effort to counter the attempts of the newly-created Department of Homeland Security to protect Americans from further assaults. Sanctuary cities have been established in three hundred and forty Democratic-controlled municipalities across the United States through resolutions that pledge noncooperation with the Department of Homeland Security and its immigration offices. There is a pledge that they have to take. I've read it, but I'm not gonna read it today. I can read it another day. And it talks about, I pledge to do this, we pledge to do that, we pledge to do this. So it's very elaborate, and it does exist. Thank you for your time, and I hope Blanca will research it and find out, not just listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Kristi Quick. After Kristi, it will be Rosie Albera.
Thank you. My name is Christine Quick. I'm a citizen of Victorville. I live in Old Town. I want to feel safe in Old Town. The world outside in that area is a very scary place. There are homes that get set on fire. There are churches that get broken into, and thugs and various types of very shady elements hang out in that area, and I understand that prisoners are dropped off at the transportation center with no resources of any kind, basically leaving them with no choice, but to go back to a life of crime. Not once do I see a cop in the area, and the citizens of the area, families, they need to feel safe there. And it is my hope, and it is my wish that you will do everything within your power, within your power, to be able to make a safer Old Town in Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you. After Rosie, it will be Jim Granger.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Rosie Albera, and I'm a resident of Old Town. And we were walking on Thursday, just to talk to our neighbors and get to know each other, when we saw about ten people getting dropped off on the transportation center that were getting released. Five men out of those ten ran across the street to the liquor store. That's a concern that I have as a resident of Old Town, because if they don't have the resources, they don't have the proper tools they need to, to get to where they need to go. They're staying in Old Town. If they don't have money, they're gonna do what they can to get those resources, which that means breaking into the business they're trying to open in Old Town, breaking into the houses, or, you know, doing what they can to survive. So I'm speaking as a resident of Old Town because I'm concerned about that. Two days later, I'm pulling into my driveway. I'm coming home from work. It's about eight thirty. I see two guys fighting on the side of my house. I call the police, and I told them what's going on, and they told me, dispatch couldn't find address, my address. That's a concern for me, because if they can't find my address for that, my life wasn't in danger at that time, but I had a concern because they were fighting in front of my house. So if they can't, if something else happens and dispatch can't find my address, then who am I supposed to call, and what I'm supposed to do? So that's why I'm bringing this up to you and see what can we do. I'm not sure if it's because the data is not updated, or what happened there, but I had to call several times and give them different streets and different addresses in order to get them to come to my house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could they not find your address? Couldn't see it marked on the street?
They told me they couldn't find the street name or the address that I was giving them. I put it on my card. There is my address in there. I had to speak to several people, and it took a while before they were able to find it. I'm not sure what the problem was.
Can we verify that?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosie. Jim Granger.
Good evening. I have Dead Celebs, a clothing store right behind Route sixty-six museum. Also, I've observed prisoners being let off at the Greyhound bus station, and running across the street and going to the liquor store. For our little business there, we've barely been open a year. We've had seven windows broken in the course of that. We've had our trash barrels stolen. We have everybody else's mail but our own in our mailbox. One time, we've been robbed there. The situation isn't improved in Old Town with prisoners being let out every day. So I implore the council and the sheriff not to do this. This isn't where the criminals come from. They come from all over the county, and they get dropped off at our doorsteps. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Weather Preston, and after him, Ruben Varela.
Hello. Hi, it's nice to see some of you again. I graduate from the leadership class this year, so I'm very involved in this city, and I'm very proud to live here. I work at Dead Celebs in Old Town, Victorville. I have been harassed multiple times, working in the business. I've called the police, I wanna say, three times, and we've only been open five months, not a year. So I've called the police probably three times. I've never seen an officer, not once, working there. I have a bat. I have, I refuse to work there alone because I've had people show up and pull out drug paraphernalia and refuse to leave the premises. I've had a guy that said he was recently let off, come into the business, no shoes, a Ziploc, a Ziploc bag of jewelry that he probably stole, trying to sell it to me for shoes. And then, when I refused to be of service to him, he left and then yelled that he loved me, and that I was beautiful. So that was quite terrifying, because I'm there, you know, more than three days a week, working, and we have an ex-vet that is, he lives across the street, and he kinda keeps an eye, but I mean, when I can't get ahold of a police officer, you know, and I make, you know, multiple calls about, you know, drug paraphernalia, or someone not wanting to leave the premises, it kind of is discouraging and very frustrating to have a business there with my family. So I hope there is something that you guys can do, and I do appreciate living in Victorville, and I do appreciate your time here. So thank you so much, guys.
Thank you very much. Ruben?
My name is Ruben Varela. Jim, you know me. Gloria, you know me.
Yes.
A lot of you know me. Now, all these people that came up here, they're saying the truth. That man right there, I left him two phone calls, and I went up to the sheriff's station, and every time he said, oh, we're having a shift change, he had to go home and eat. Now, we pay him to work. If he doesn't wanna work here, get them the hell out of here. You know, hey, I'm gonna say what I gotta say. My son hates me for saying things, but that man has not done his job. He's not doing nothing for us. I just, I just got burglarized. They just stole my twelve-gauge shotgun. They stole ten thousand dollars worth of tools, craftsmen. Now, you guys are responsible for this. You know, you guys work for us. You're not doing any work at all. Get off that high horse, and do your job, you know? I gave a person work to do at my house, because I'm getting up in age. And the other thing, they stole all this stuff. My son worked hard, so did I, for all this brand-new tools. They were in my shed. I let him clean up my yard. Yeah, he cleaned up all right, cleaned me out. And I'm gonna tell you, you guys better get off the high horse and get over there, especially you. Yes, I'm pointing at you. You better do your job, you know? I've been threatened over there, just like everybody else heard, you know? And that's not right. I seen the Greyhound bus become a depot for all the lowlife. They drop them off there, and they don't care. I used to tell Jim all the time right there, yes, you, right to his face, what's going on? He ignored me, before you were even mayor, you know? And, oh, we'll take care of it, mañana. Mañana never comes today, because it's a different day. You know, either you guys do your job, or get off the council. You guys make the choice. Yes, I'm pissed off right now, especially at the captain right there.
Let's have a little respect, please.
What?
Be respectful.
I am. I haven't said nothing bad. Don't give me that. Don't use up my time. So, you know, all those times I called up, left message there, went over, no response. May I finish what I have to say?
To the mayor.
Your time is up.
Okay, Gloria, be that way. Thank you.
I'm trying to do my job. That's what you told me to do.
Hey, my son and I are here, and he, he has three minutes too. I'm gonna use them up too. And that's legal. You wanna go by rules? You know, I'm just trying to get across to you guys, get off your high horse, and go over there and see what's going on. I could go on and on all day long, you know? You were talking about the sewer. You drive through there, and there's, you could smell feces.
Okay. Thank you.
Not done, you know, but...
Next person is Paul Lancy, or Lynn.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity for allowing me to come here and speak. First time speaking in front of the council. I was at a workshop earlier, and I didn't have the ability to speak, and I'd just like to say that there are some important things we need to keep in mind. I live on a Spring Valley Lake Ridge, and if we terminate a contract with county fire, or we annex into Cal Fire contract with Cal Fire, or create our own Victorville Fire Department again, a resident such as myself who has three young kids, who has had to call 911 before, I lose that close engine that's right about a mile, one point six miles from my house, and my next engine comes from Hispry Road in Silica, and that's if they're in quarters and available. And if they're not, then my next engine, or my next medic squad, comes from the fairgrounds. That's a long distance, especially if my house is on fire, my daughter falls unconscious like she has recently, and my wife doesn't have the skill, ability, and skill set that I do to resuscitate a child, or to render aid to a child. But paramedics and the firefighters who are stationed in the Spring Valley Lake Station, who are one point six miles from my house, they do have that ability, and they do have that time to get there. I understand they may not be in quarters when we call 911 next time, but they were this time, and we were able to use them, and we're appreciative of that service. It's easy for you guys to sit up here and think about what's great for the city, and I appreciate you guys doing your due diligence and being fiscally responsible with our fire service in the city of Victorville, in order to make sure that our tax dollars on our property taxes are being spent wisely. But should this go to a vote? I don't believe it should. I believe that out of a city with almost a hundred thousand people in it, last election, four thousand people showed up. It shows how much they really care. So you guys should look at what really matters, and what really matters is providing fire protection at an equal level across the board for the city of Victorville. The city of Victorville creating its own fire department, as much as I love local control, we can't afford it. We don't have the, we wouldn't have the resources or abilities to serve the community, as such as the county would. And if Cal Fire is selected, we're way out of line. It's a long process, as well as all decisions would have to go up to the state. I thank you guys very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Al Cotilla.
The reason I'm here is to let you guys know the importance of the lack of police up here again. A guy went over my buddy's house early in the morning. He, my buddy was outside. The guy picks up a big brick, and the guy said, what are you gonna do with that brick? And he said, I'm gonna throw it through your window. And he threw it right through the front window, a great big expensive window. We called the sheriff's department. We knew where the guy was. They told us he was at the Seven-Eleven. We waiting for the sheriff. We waiting for the sheriff. We waiting. Finally, we see a sheriff's SUV coming down. And I love those things. They're beautiful. But the guy gets out. He was a real nice guy, and I thought he did a good job taking the report as far as he took it. But then, we said the guy's at the Seven-Eleven. It didn't interest him. We said, the brick is in the house where it landed. You wanna see it? A sheriff would have wanted to seen all that, and this guy wasn't in. Then I walked around, and I saw he has no gun. And then I thought, this guy, he's not even a cop. He's the guy that goes around and just takes reports and does this. He's not a cop. So I told him, he's not a cop. We can't go get the guy, 'cause the guy that could identify the guy, we thought we could get in the police car with the sheriff and go pick him up at Seven-Eleven. Now the guy's gone. They could have got him for sure. The guy that knocked on my window at ten o'clock at night when I was wide awake, my bed is high, my head is right next to that window. He banged on my window at ten o'clock at night. Called the sheriff's department. They never came. I looked across the field, 'cause I was on the floor. I looked across the field. There was a guy across the street looking at my house. A big guy, about six feet, but I couldn't tell anymore. It was too dark, but I could see the guy clear. You oughta know by now we don't have enough cops up here, and I don't see any more coming. I see more people coming. Now, the Brown Act doesn't say a word about three minutes to talk. The Brown Act says that you have to give us a reasonable amount of time to say what we have to say. It doesn't say three minutes, and I've heard you guys say for, we have to do it. You have to get out of there. The Brown Act, the Brown Act. It's not the Brown Act, it's you, or which one, if one of you was saying at the time. I've been coming to these meetings for years, and I've heard it several times. You have to leave. The Brown Act says it. The Brown Act doesn't say it. It says you have to give us a reasonable amount of time to say what we have to say. And three minutes isn't reasonable. They also said, we have to watch you while we're here, and we have to keep our sovereignty and make sure you don't take it away from us. And they said, our sovereignty is our power.
That's three minutes, Al.
And it says it in the Brown Act.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
That's the thing that you like to go by, when it favors you.
Thank you. Dana Granger.
Good evening.
Good evening. First of all, I, even though it's summer, I have to bring my winter clothes to wear in here. It is freezing in this place. So next time I come, I'm bringing my winter coat. Secondly, uh, the police, as far as the sheriffs, I have a few businesses up here in the high desert. And I've had very, very good luck. I know my daughter said that, I think though, that she's young and she wants instant gratification. Whenever we've had a break-in prior to a few of our businesses up here, we've had the sheriffs come and it's been in a reasonable time. I know that we probably do need more sheriffs, but I, I think they're doing a pretty good job. Secondly, I'd like to thank Sharon for coming up and bringing to your attention the Route sixty-six museum. Because I do think that the city is missing out on a lot of money being spent in this country from other countries and other travelers that come to this country, that, that's their persona of this country is to come down the Route sixty-six and they travel from Chicago to Santa Monica. And, you know, I have another business that's not in Victorville, and that's the number-one question they come in asking. Is there anything to do? Is there anywhere to go? They don't wanna go to the mall. They have malls at every city. They wanna do something that's Americana, small-town type thing. They wanna walk around and see what, how we grew up in the, you know, how this country was made. And basically, we always suggested them to go to the Route sixty-six museum, of course, because it is, you know, it's a great little museum. But I think that we're missing out on the dollars by not having somewhere for the people to walk around and spend money in, in, in your, in the city of Victorville. And third, you know, I know it's been beat a little bit about the homeless being dropped off at the transportation center. But I would like to ask a question. Are the convicts given a ticket when they're dropped off? Are they given a bus ticket? Because the sheriff that drops them off in the van, he, he won't answer any questions, he won't tell you anything. He just says, listen, it's my job, I've just been told to drop them off, I don't know anything about them. And, and they're right, most of them do not have shoes. I don't understand that. I think that's very odd, that they're all let out and they don't have shoes. Do they have shoes when they're arrested? I, I don't know, but they're mostly shoeless when they're dropped off. I don't know if they have a bus ticket or if they're given a bus ticket. Would you know, um, Captain? Oh, you can't comment on that? Well, I was just thinking, because the, most of the time, if they, because there's a lady that's involved with Root, and she has told me that the, that, and I also went go to the Renees down there, that little restaurant. I go eat there a lot cuz I try to support the local businesses in the city. And she tells me that a lot of them get some kind of paper with a bus ticket, and they sell that to people that are trying to buy bus tickets, so that they have money to go to the liquor store. So I was wondering if, if they are given a bus ticket, could we come up with a solution so they can't sell it for drugs or alcohol? Like maybe some type of wristband?
That's three minutes.
I miss that.
Oh, okay. Something that can be cut off, you know, by the bus driver.
Thank you. Valentin Coutina.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm here to speak to you about a known problem that we have in Old Town Victorville. As you have already heard and know, there are people being released, prisoners being released at the transportation center. I was personally a witness of it. And when trying to uh, talk to the sheriff that was dropping them off, um, I was surprised that he wasn't truthful. Uh, he said that Captain Schuler was no longer the captain of Victorville, that it was a captain messenger. And I'm surprised to see that Captain Schuler is here with uh, the logo as police captain. So I'm surprised that a sheriff would be given uh, not very truthful information. Anyways, the problem is that these people are being dropped off, uh, starting at about six o'clock. After everything is closed, the bus station is closed, even if they did have a ticket, they can't get on the bus cuz there's no service. All the services that we talk about that are there for them, they're already closed and everybody's gone. These people are left to themselves to fend the only way they know how, by preying on whoever they can. That puts our businesses in danger, our children in danger, our women in danger. Is this uh, how we're going to continue addressing this issue? Now, we have various ideas on how to help transfer some of these people out of Old Town, but they're not gonna be uh, very uh, pleasant to uh, some. So we ask that we hurry up and cross this uh, horsefield and get this taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have. So now I will ask our city manager to give us a report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think it goes without saying that everyone up here is concerned with what we've heard tonight. I don't wanna, I know we'll hear that echoed. Um, I intend to reach out to the sheriff through Captain Schuler to talk about this further, uh, as far as um, people being released there, former prisoners, whatever it is. I also had a city employee tell me that another local police agency, that he had seen them dropping somebody at our transportation center as well. Not the sheriff's department, another local uh, agency. So, um, don't wanna make any accusations there, it's just something a city employee told me that we're looking into now, so. Um, but beyond that, uh, some of the upcoming events for the city. Um, this coming Saturday from eight to twelve is Residential Landscape Conversion Ideas Class. Space is limited, please contact Donna McCormick at nine five five two zero one six. And then also, over at our library, we have a summer reading program going on uh, right now. Signups are uh, June third through July twenty-first. So if you know any kids that may want to participate in that, and that's all that I have as far as the report.
Thank you. Now we have discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda.
I have a couple things, Madam Mayor. Uh, first, I'm gonna go a little bit beyond what Doug says and actually give staff some direction. To come back with some explanation of what we've heard tonight, I, I'm having a hard time thinking that our sheriff, our captain's sending people down there, but I don't, I just don't know. I mean, I believe what I'm hearing. Let's at least try to establish that whatever facts we can and find out what's going on. The other thing is, I would like to ask the council to agendize for the next meeting, a discussion and possibly action, uh, to have a ballot issue in November twenty seventeen uh, relating to a new tax for public safety. I'm gonna go beyond fire, and I'm gonna make it broader than that, public safety. There's, there's a lot of information that the community needs to know about. I won't, I won't have a discussion now, I'm just gonna ask that we agendize that for the next meeting. Would that be agreeable? We did not give that direction in the workshop today, and I think we should give it.
I concur.
That's all I have.
Was that your motion?
Not a motion, as long as we have consensus, I think that's enough.
Correct, as long as we have consensus, staff knows what to do.
So we should probably still go through the votes?
What?
We should probably still go through the votes, that way it doesn't seem like there is no consensus.
Is, is everybody in agreement?
Yes.
We are in agreement.
I think it's unanimous consensus.
Anyone else?
Or comments? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I have, I have one item. I, in regard to problems we're having with crime and every place I go, I'm, I'm, individuals are complaining about that. And some of you know that I'm involved in a business, and it seems like we get robbed about once every week or two. And uh, let's see, we, three, two people or three people have been put in jail. Do have security. Two other people have been caught and let go. And it's the homeless. Half the cases were individuals who have been, just gotten out of jail. One was three days, one was seven days. I have, I'm, as affected, I guess, as most people are because of the damage that they have done to personal property. And I, and I, I used to really feel like I need to do something to help the homeless. And after my own experience in about eighteen months, I feel it's my responsibility to help them out of town. This has just gone beyond any kind of reason. And I'm not sure that there's anything we can do. It seems like there's a battery of attorneys waiting for a city to do something, or even individuals, so they can tell us what their rights are. I don't wanna violate anyone's rights, but no one has a right to squatting on property, refusing to leave, breaking windows. You say something to them, they come back with a rock through the window. Destroyed three metal doors, very expensive, simply because they were angry, because they were told to leave the property. There's got to be a solution. And all you have to do is to go downtown and see what's going on. And you're almost afraid to say anything because they'll come back in the middle of the night and damage your property. I'm not sure what the solution is, but city attorney, city manager, police chief, this council has got to have a solution. We've got to pursue this. And I'm sorry, but I think the time for holding hands and feeling sorry for someone is just over. It's just over. We've got to take a hard-line approach, I'm sorry. But for the last three years, you know, we've talked to agencies that want to help them, they're not helping. Feeding them a meal a day is not helping, it's drawing them here. Providing them services is bringing them here. And there's gotta be a better solution. I don't know what it is, because I keep asking, but please, we've got to, we've got to take a position, we've got to do something. I, I came up with an idea that, for heaven's sakes, why can't we find out where they're from and buy them a bus ticket and send them back to where they came from? That didn't meet with any approval, but I still wanna find out from the attorney and the manager, is it legal and can this city consider it? It's a small price to pay compared to the damage they're doing and the damage they're causing to businesses. And I don't think this city is, is doing the citizens and taxpayers and the voters right by doing nothing. We have to take a position. We have to, we have no choice. This is, is out of hand. So, my plea to the council, uh, direct staff, the attorney, find a way where we can take a position and do something about it. I don't know if this is cooperating with the sheriff's department, County of San Bernardino, State of California, opening up a mental institute to put them in or something, but this has to end. It's ridiculous. Just, so, that's my say for the night, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Cox. Let me comment on at least that last piece, well, two things. One, we are continuing to pursue a permanent housing option with the county. Uh, we have made progress with that, not ready for an announcement yet. But regarding the bus ticket, um, Captain Schuler and I have talked recently about this, and in fact, budgeted money, uh, in his budget, uh, to do just that. Um, in the past, uh, cities have gotten in trouble for simply putting a homeless person on the bus and sending them away. Uh, so the program that isn't quite, wasn't quite ready for announcement just yet, but that is intended to start July first with the new budget, is actually not a bus ticket out of town, it is a bus ticket home. So it is intended, and like I said, it's not quite ready for public announcement yet because we're still working out the details so that we don't get sued by that laundry list of attorneys who think that we're simply getting rid of the homeless. Uh, but the intent is that if a homeless person is hampered in Victorville because they have family or someone along those lines who can help them in another state, in another city, in another county, wherever, uh, and at least the discussions we've had, uh, it would be that if that deputy can in fact make contact with a person who is willing to go to the bus station on the other end and collect that person, that uh, we would pay for that ticket, uh, wherever that is. Uh, if it ends up being a plane ticket, that's fine too. But that idea has come from a number of different sources, and we are very happy to pursue it, making sure that we do it in a legal manner, so that we don't get sued.
Now, to deal with about five to ten percent of the problem.
Five to ten percent, more than we can right this second, yes. Hopefully, the, the housing program will help and, and other programs as well.
My only concern about hous- well, this is not.
No, it's...
We wanna have this as a discussion topic, Mr. Cox? Agendized item? I believe so.
I'd agree.
Maybe we wait until after July one to where the county has taken some position on the housing, but we have to do something. Whether it's next meeting in June, or the first meeting in July, or the second meeting in July, I don't wanna kick the can down the road too far. This council has to do something.
We will, we will be meeting with Supervisor Levin Good regarding the, uh, what he's working on as far as the homeless. Uh, but nevertheless, we still have this problem and we need to address it now, so, um...
Is there a consensus to have it on the agenda, July meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
That's unanimous?
I also have things I'd like to add to the agenda.
One else?
Yes. So I'm asking on behalf of the city and on behalf of the people, that the amount of council cities should be the same whether we take it through benefits or compensation. And I'd like to see this on the, on the next agenda for discussion and possible action.
What is it?
Uh, we didn't hear you.
What was it?
So I'm asking on behalf of the city and on behalf of the people, that the amount that city council makes through the city, that it should be the same whether we get it through benefits or compensation. And I'd like to see that on the next agenda.
I'm not understanding.
I, I don't understand.
We don't understand what you're saying.
The amount of money that we make through the city. How much we get paid?
What, what money are you talking about?
That's what I wanna agenda is discussed and being to possible action. I'm not having a discussion now, I'm just trying to put that on the agenda for discussion.
What you wanna put on the agenda?
How much money do you make for the city?
What?
How much money do you make for the city?
Set by the state.
Okay, well, when I asked for a request, Carol Lee said that couldn't be given to me. So I would like that to be an agenda item, so when I request, uh, council members' budget or what it is that we make, that it would be accessible. And it wasn't, so no, it's not accessible. It's not transparent.
No, no, my response was that the city council members all receive the same amount of money. You were asking, uh, the question about for each individual council member, how, um, depending on what benefits they receive, the amounts could be different, and that is what I...
Yes, that we don't make the same, right.
But the nine forty-two a month, you all received...
All I'm saying is, this is what I would like to add on the agenda, and we can vote on it. So you don't have, we don't have to argue about it, just yes or no. And if, if it doesn't get on the agenda, well then, it was no majority.
Understand what you're asking for, I'm not gonna agree to anything, so you better make it clear what you want.
Well, I did, I made it clear, I don't know why you don't understand. I don't know if someone else would like to translate, maybe someone from the audience what it is that I'm trying to say. We don't make the same amount of money. All, all I'm saying is, we all should be equally paid. I don't know if they have tiers or this and that. So I would like to see that as a council member. So this is what I'm asking.
I think I understand what you're saying. You wanna know what everybody gets. Okay, we all get paid the same amount, but you wanna know what our net is after deductions, is that it? No?
I don't understand that.
Okay, well, unfortunately, nobody understands my question. So I guess that I move to put this on the agenda, and if I don't have a second, it'll die, right? Right, so I move to put this on the agenda.
Just to clarify, all council members are paid the same amount of money, so I...
To clarify, I'd never got that email that said that. I was, said, HR said, no, you're not supposed to. I can forward that email to you if you'd like that.
I'd be happy to take a look at it, but I'm telling you right now that the...
I don't understand why, if I bring something to the table, we can't just vote yes or no. We don't even have a discussion, just say no if you don't want it, or say yes. If you don't understand, I don't know how else to make it clear.
There, there's nothing to discuss, we all make, what, about nine...
Nine forty-two a month.
Nine something a month?
Nine forty-two fifteen, or something like that.
Period.
So then there shouldn't be an issue.
Some of us get medical benefits, some of us choose not to. I'm on Medicare. I don't need the city's medical plan, so I don't have that withholding. My check's bigger, I don't have income tax withholding. Uh, it's, that's it, folks, there's nothing else to it.
Why are we having a discussion?
What? There's nothing to discuss.
Transparency, exactly, that's all I was asking. So if nobody gave me a second to my motion, then my motion died. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second thing that I'd like to add is, there's, um, I titled it, "The Municipal Code to Purchasing Changes." I would like to focus and to consider on the purchasing code to be amended to include a percentage of jobs that would be, when they're contracted, a wardy receives any kind of contract, that Victorville or the Victor Valley area has an opportunity. And this would be a starting point where we can start to see, uh, money and the economy of our city begin to grow. And I discussed this a little earlier, so if you guys understood that, or if you wanna translate it, that's something that I would like to see also on the agenda, so I move to put this on the agenda.
Tell me what that was, Doug.
Uh, based on the earlier conversation especially, I think what she's asking for is to discuss an amendment to the purchasing code that would require contractors doing business with the city as a part of either the evaluation of their proposal or as a requirement, um, that they hire a certain percentage or number of Victorville residents and/or Victor Valley residents. Is that close, Blanca?
You understood it, and you didn't seem to have a problem, and no one else did, so you're doing a very good job. Thank you.
Okay.
If there's no second, then the motion dies.
Okay, we move on.
And I have a third one. I'd like to have the supportive council to add to the next agenda to consider voting on a measure that would allow HR and Victorville staff to fully disclose any items that council asks for full disclosure, that we adopt a total transparency payroll, for example, the city employees payroll, so that we council can have access, and we can show the citizenry that we're representing them. I make a motion to do that. Is there a second?
If there's no second, the motion dies.
Okay, I move on to E four. Reports from council members. No, that was the, uh...
Just to add items to the agenda.
Items regarding the upcoming, uh...
Madam Mayor, if I can go first?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's participation today and hearing different, uh, stories or, uh, accounts of things that have been happening. Uh, it is good to hear feedback. That's why we're here. If we, if you weren't here telling us this, we wouldn't know. And I've said it a thousand times to people, if, there's a process. Sometimes things don't work correctly the first time, uh, but that doesn't mean it's not a priority for us as well. Doesn't mean that we're not sharing the same concerns as well. I've walked down on Seventh Street. I've looked around. I've, I've come up with some ideas for improvements as far as burned-out buildings and some of the other issues, and, you know, that was just one part of it. Uh, but we do have a specific plan, uh, and it's slow coming. There's no doubt about it. Uh, but in the meantime, as you can imagine, when the state of California and the voters in this state take on policies like emptying the jails, that's not something I can control, and I never do talk about the state. It's worthless to me. The federal government, the last eight years, their policies, not much for me to talk about. But when crime is affecting our residents, that is a direct result of emptying the jails. So when people vote for emptying the jails, what do you think is gonna happen? And so then the rest of us are scrambling to, to, to stop this, or when people give money to homeless. I had a woman next to me at an, coming off the freeway. I was closest to the, to the corner. There was a homeless person there, and I don't give to homeless people. I give to the homeless shelter. Okay? But one of the conditions of giving to the homeless shelter for the people that are there, you're not supposed to be on drugs. Oh, what a surprise. That's too much to ask for. So anyway, that's where I give. And, you know, there's plenty of organizations to do these things. But this person next to me, the light turned green. And this person held out a dollar for this person, and you don't even know if they're from the high desert. You don't even know. We've had a string of folks come up from down the hill because people are still giving. People down the hill don't have time at an intersection when the light's green to hold out a dollar. Right in front of me, the person jumps out, drops his sweater right in front of the car, grabs the dollar, grabs the sweater, and goes back. And this is the nonsense that happens every day. And I feel bad for, for the overwhelmed resources that we do have, whether it's fire, or the police. And I appreciate everything that they do, but it is like whack-a-mole. There's an intersection right there on, um, La Paz or, or Roy Rogers. Roy Rogers and the Fifteen, the McDonald's. And on the other side is the Chevron. And there's a sign there that says, "No soliciting." Do you think that stops people? Every time I go to Costco, there's somebody there. And when I see the police out there at McDonald's or at that intersection moving people along, I really appreciate that. It really means a lot to me. Because I know how hard it is, and it's a never-ending problem. Every time I used to see a homeless encampment, when I first became a council member, uh, one was off the Mojave exit, uh, Fifteen southbound. They start popping up one at a time. It becomes two, then it becomes three. And like snowflakes, I would report it to our folks here. And you know what? At, at some point, it just becomes one of these things where, as a community, how you view these things is very important. But I think it's, it's okay to be passionate. It's okay to come up here and talk about the different challenges we have. There are processes for, for addressing those. And if, the assumption is that we don't care, we don't know, that, that is not correct. And I know these folks that I'm sitting up here with. And we do this for service. We do this for the community, for the residents. And, uh, there's nothing we can't overcome. Things are difficult sometimes, but they're not impossible. So we just need to keep that communication open. People can reach me through the city. Um, I'm sure my email address is, uh, out there, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I don't have anything. I got out of turn and already ended, so I'm through. Thank you.
I have a few things to say. Karen, I heard your concern. How can the city of Victorville kind of help increase with the image and also the economy of Victorville? I'm, I was thinking maybe if we can partner with what's called public-private partnerships. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. Maybe do something in that regard. The other thing is, um, for the second speaker, thank you for the definition of sanctuary cities. This is a state issue, and I would kindly refer you to take it to Pro Tem, Senator Kevin DeLeon. He's working on that. That's a state issue. And I'd also like to remind everyone that on June 12th, Monday, from nine to 10, we're gonna be having our first, uh, event, Coffee with a Cop, and it's gonna be at a Starbucks. I know you probably have the address, Mr. Schuler. 15617. I just forgot the street. I don't know if you would fill in the blank for me for the individuals to know that they're welcomed to that Starbucks. I just missed out the Roy Rogers part. And also, um, some of us were able to attend the, um, event for the highest honor Eagle Scout, so it was a pleasure for me to be attending that place. And then lastly, I'd like to say that if we look at our, at our agendas under adjournment of meetings, it says, "Any writings or documents provided to the majority of the board members, city councils regarding any item of this agenda, so forth," it says you can contact the city clerk. I think what I'd also like to have is to have the actual link on, on the website, because not everybody comes or is able to show up and ask the clerk for the information. So if there was a link that showed how the members or anyone can view that, that would help out also. We're very tech, tech savvy here now, and, um, I think that's a way that it would help bring out our, our audience better to understand what we're doing with our meetings and the agendas and the back material and all this information. Thank you.
Are you done?
Thank you.
Else?
For a motion to, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
May I adjourn?